Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday, May 4, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson. Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Pastor Rick Carlsson's back with us to give our invocation tonight. He's with Prairie Hills Covenant Church. Pastor Rick, thanks for being back with us. I'd ask that you stand for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I promise I will refrain from not ending the prayer with "May the fourth be with you." Let us pray. Heavenly Father, it is an amazing and wonderful thing that a government entity would invoke your presence. And so we do that tonight. We pray that you would give wisdom to these women and men beyond their experience and that you would bless the people of Sioux Falls beyond what we deserve. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Carlsson, for the invocation. We'll move on to item four as our consent agenda and any items to be pulled there tonight. If not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Skip all the way ahead to item forty-nine, then, our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move to approve.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Councilor Sale. Any discussion there? All right. Let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right. That's going to pass six to zero. We will move on to item fifty.
Item fifty is a conditional use permit appeal, CU-016085. Appeal of conditional use permit for a billboard larger than two hundred and eighty-eight square feet located at thirty-five oh three South Phillips Avenue along Interstate two twenty-nine. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Pride Neon Incorporated, Will Brizika.
Jason, before you go ahead, I'm just going to explain what's going on here. We're moving this. This item is, at this point in the agenda, because this is what's called a quasi-judicial hearing we'll be having on this item. So it's written in the record. Jason's going to give us an update on what this is about. We will have public input. And really, it's kind of a hearing. Councilmembers will discuss evidence you may have received about this topic at the hearing that was not posted online. Citizens can respond to newly disclosed evidence. Again, if there is any, then we'll have a motion. We'll debate, and then we'll vote. So that is what's going on tonight. Jason, floor is yours on this item.
I'm sorry. What was that? Sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. The floor is yours on this item. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Jason Bieber, representing Planning Development Services.
I thought you wanted me to say all that over again. I'm like, I'm not saying all that over again. You gotta listen.
The applicant here is Will Brizika with Pride Neon. The owner is Deals on Wheels Incorporated. This is located at thirty-five oh three South Phillips Avenue. It's located on the I-229 frontage. It is located within that billboard opportunity district that was approved probably five or six years ago. The applicant is looking to replace. There's an existing two hundred and eighty-eight-square-foot static sign on this property in the southeast corner. They are looking at replacing that with a twenty-eight-foot high by twenty-two-foot wide for a total of six hundred and sixteen-square-foot digital billboard, two-sided, and a maximum height of the forty-foot high. The property owner to the east was concerned at the Planning Commission meeting, and a letter that was posted online also indicated his concern with some of the light trespass with this specific sign on their property. As we know, off-premise signs are allowed at a maximum size of two hundred and eighty-eight square feet by right. Then the applicant does have that opportunity to go for a conditional use permit to actually take it up to a total of six hundred and seventy-two square feet with that approval from the Planning Commission and then, obviously, tonight with the appeal to you, City Council, here. And as indicated, the applicant isn't going to the full six seventy-two. He's looking at six hundred and sixteen square feet. Typically, in the past, staff has supported larger off-premise signs on some of our faster corridors, specifically I-229, Interstate twenty-nine, I-90, and then I-229. There currently are twelve off-premise signs on this specific corridor. Two previous off-premise signs have had conditional use permits approved for six hundred and seventy-two square feet and have been approved by the Planning Commission. And finally, the proposed sign is located more of an industrial area, as you can see by this aerial. And then the business that's directly to the east is contractor shopping, kind of a storage yard that's adjacent, and then another industrial business specifically to the west.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on item fifty here? Come on up, young man.
Hi, Ron Nelson, thirty-three oh eight South Kiwanis Avenue, representing the adjacent property owner, JKL Real Estate. They are in opposition of this billboard largely because, two things. First of all, they got blindsided by it. They really had no advance notice of it short of the letter from the city. Would hope that it would be customary, if not just a matter of common sense, but maybe even common courtesy, to just let the adjacent property owner know that there's going to be a change that you might like to know about, and it might affect your property. Most of you know me. You know what I do for a living. I'm in the commercial property leasing business. I can't say that this is going to be a negative, having this large of a billboard, or I guess as the Argus leader quoted me today, I said a jumbotron at the Planning Commission meeting. But it probably isn't going to be an enhancement to the leasing effort on the property. So thereby, that just kind of then translates into a probable financial impact on the adjacent property owner. There's no animosity between property owners. There's no animosity with the billboard company. We're all friends. I help them out on a personal level with billboard questions and sending them sites and so forth. So it's really not about that at all. Just a matter of fairness for an adjacent property owner. The applicant really doesn't even see this billboard, so they're receiving a significant financial benefit from something that really has no negative impact on them. The adjacent property owner is getting all of the negative impact, and so I think we're asking for one of two things. Either an outright denial, or if we could move the billboard to the west on essentially the west property boundary of the applicant's property. I've spoke briefly with the billboard folks about that option. I don't know. I'm not going to put words in their mouth, but I don't know that they're in opposition to that. As I look at it, it actually fits better almost there. It's beside the applicant's building. There's some scruffy old bushes there that would probably be replaced by this billboard. And where it's at right now is almost in the way of their parking lot, or at least more so than where I'm proposing a alternate location. So those are the requests of the adjacent property owner. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thanks, Ron. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight?
Good evening. Greetings. I'm David Sokitis, and when I drive, I like to look at the road and not at flashy neon signs in the vicinity of the road. One of the problems with all these digital billboards is that they are designed to drag your attention away from the road and away from your safety and towards the advertisement. So if you're going to allow fancy neon signs like this, there really ought to be a limit as to how fast the signs can change. And that would certainly make for improved driver safety. Otherwise, you know, you're making roads less safe and more dangerous for the sake of commerce, and that's not really what we need to do.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. If I could, I have a handout of a light study I would like to share with the members of the council.
Sure. You can give it to this young gentleman there. You guys just introduce yourself for the audience.
Yeah. My name is Zach Nigabauer.
Doug Muth, Book Your Billboard, seventy-three twenty-nine South Russet Avenue.
Will Brizika, Pride Neon, fourteen twenty-one South Lake Avenue.
Members of the council, we really appreciate your time tonight. So Doug and I own a locally-owned billboard company here in Sioux Falls called Book Your Billboard. And, you know, one unique notation about our company is we've almost grown entirely and organically after the moratorium that was put on billboards. So if you look at our entire company, it was after a lot of the restrictions got much tighter and the zoning changed. And as a lifelong resident of Sioux Falls, both Doug and I, we get it. I feel like the intention of that moratorium was not to put a billboard in people's backyards, single-family homes, apartments. We want people's, you know, lives and their homes to have a great balance. And so we take that very seriously. And as we go to develop these locations, we try to, you know, very intentionally put them where we think they're appropriate to put. And I believe that this billboard really meets all those intentions. I'll just kind of walk through a little bit of our thought process. But this billboard that we're discussing tonight has been here for twenty-five-plus years in the skyline of Sioux Falls. So as you've driven on the interstate by the Minnesota Avenue exit as you head west, for twenty-five years it's been there. The owner of it is Bob Nelson and his brother. They own the Autobuy Building here. And they're just two independent brothers that have one billboard, and they've owned and operated themselves for a very long time. Our company has taken over the sales and management of that billboard. For the last twenty-five years, this billboard's a static billboard, so it's a paper billboard. And then it has a big halogen light, kind of like the big lights that you have along the interstate, that lights and illuminates that billboard. When we went to apply for the cup application, we did not have to apply for anything to make it digital. It's my understanding that whether it's off-premise or on-premise, if you keep the current size, you can convert to digital. So there's no application required for that. What we are really applying for is the larger size. And when you look at, you know, where in Sioux Falls, and you look at in respect to the sign code of Sioux Falls, where do you typically see larger billboards? There along our interstate corridor. There's a few inside of Sioux Falls, but mainly along the interstate corridor, because people are driving very fast, and small print can be hard to read and can be distracting. Obviously, if you've been to larger cities, you see larger-sized billboards along their interstate systems as well. And so, you know, where would you typically see larger billboards today in Sioux Falls? You see two of them on both sides of the Forty-first and Louise exit. You see one on the Twenty-sixth Street Interstate exit. You see one on the Twelve Street Interstate exit, and you see one on the Benson Road exit. And, you know, given that Minnesota Avenue is one of our busiest interstate exits in Sioux Falls, we feel like this really follows along with the previous decisions that the cities have done for billboards. And I think that's supported by, at the Planning Commission, the city's recommendation of approval and then unanimous approval amongst the Planning Commission. You know, I appreciate the comments of Ron, and we want to be great neighbors. It's always our goal. We followed, you know, all the correct steps as part of that process. The board that we're hoping to put in, that we'd like to do, is twenty-eight feet tall and twenty-two feet wide. It's actually smaller than the billboards that I just named on those other interstate exits. It's a little bit smaller and a little bit smaller than what is allowed by the city if you put in a larger billboard. So we're not going to the full size. In October of two thousand twenty-one, we installed an identical billboard, twenty-eight by twenty-two, on the Twelve Street Interstate exit where Beersbach is located. So you may have seen this vertical billboard there. And the feedback has been very positive. We have a few South Dakota State universities advertising on it. We have not had one complaint. I don't believe the city's had a complaint either. And when that was put in, it was actually next to a hotel. In comparison, this is next to, you know, a heavy warehouse, storage yard, where I don't believe anybody is there, you know, overnight. I don't believe it's a twenty-four-hour office. And from my visual perspective, which I've included in the packet on the last page, there's really no windows along that business in the backside. What I've included that I've handed out to you tonight is a light study. And we actually had this light study done for this exact location with the exact billboard we're proposing to put in. So Dechatronics has an independent team that studies these locations. And, you know, it is pretty interesting how they do this. So I'm going to read the number one here, units of measurement. A foot candle is a measurement of light intensity. One foot candle is defined as enough light to saturate one square foot of one lumen of light. For example, where it shows point two-two, which is the highest this billboard will put out, point two-two, it has a light intensity of twenty-two percent of one single wax candle. So the technology is really amazing. And when you go down to number five, it talks about these billboards are, they're made by Dechatronics. They meet all national North American DOT standards. So sometimes when you think of light, you think of, you know, a spotlight shining out on the interstate. So if I were to drive on the interstate and this billboard was putting a spotlight out, it would light up my car, and it would be very distracting. That's not what these signs do. The light almost shines downward, and you don't really notice it until you look at it. So again, it meets all North American DOT standards. And then the last thing that I think is really cool is there's an auto dimming technology in it. So as it gets darker and darker out, it gets dimmer and dimmer and dimmer, kind of like on our iPhones if you have your automatic dimming on your cell phone. So it's easier to read. It's not distracting. And so, you know, I guess in conclusion, you know, in my experience of developing billboards, it's tricky. There's not a lot of opportunities to put these in. We're following all the code. You know, one issue with moving it too far west of that building is the city requires a ten-foot setback. And we show those setbacks when we're meeting them. So these structures are very large, so they become hard to place. And so partly where, one, it's been placed there for twenty-five years, but partly it meets all the setback requirements. I have talked to this local landowner, and he would be willing in the range of five to ten feet to go to the west, which would be a fifty to a hundred percent improvement from the minimum setback requirements in the current code. I don't know if it could go much further than that, but he's okay doing that. And so I guess in conclusion, if we can't do this billboard here, I don't know if we could really do them anywhere. I think this really meets all the intention of the code and, obviously, with it being an office and warehouse district and along the interstate. So, members of the council, I would ask that you approve this. You uphold the Planning Commission's unanimous vote. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Zach. Any feedback from you guys as well? Just the muscle? All right. All right. Love it. All right. We may have some questions for you. So you guys can have a seat, and we'll take some more public input if there is any.
I asked the mayor and city council, because he went over his five minutes. So the time that was left over the five minutes, if you can give citizens the rest of the remaining time.
This is called a quasi-judicial hearing, so the time limits don't.
So I'm just letting you know.
Quiet. I'm running this meeting, so the time limits don't apply for a quasi-judicial hearing. So you can leave the dais. You can leave this chambers if you can abide by the laws. Okay? Anyone else for public input? All right. Let's see if there's any questions first. Any questions for Jason or the Planning Commission on this? Councilor Knightzert, go ahead, and then I'll go to Councilor Kylie.
I do have a few questions, and when the time comes, I do have disclosures as well.
Okay.
So my question is, the circle in red, I take it that is the legal parcel we're talking about? Is what's to the west, which is the rest of that Autobuy Building, is that a separate legal parcel? And so we're talking about this, just this red piece?
You're correct. This is one of those properties that have two tax parcels that haven't been combined. So there's two separate legals.
Just in theory, if they were to move it, they would have to stay within the, is it a ten-foot setback from side property lines?
It's ten foot from the rear property line there, and then ten foot from the side. So you'd have a little bit of wiggle room over there.
Okay. So it'd have to be basically ten foot off of the red on what would be the west side, too, if you were going to move it over, right? It's what I'm saying.
Correct. Yep.
But what, just in theory, what if they, if they did move it over onto this other parcel, does that start triggering some new things as far as?
We'd have to read, I guess I'd have to look at the legal description that was part of the notice of hearing. If it included both, then I, I mean, we have an attorney here, so I don't want to speak for them. But whatever we noticed, if it would include both of those, then I would say it would include both for the conditional use permit.
But do you see problems as from, and I'm not necessarily advocating this, but if it were to move, would that create problems on your end if it went to a different property? I don't think there's other billboards within six hundred feet, so we don't have.
We haven't looked at that. That came up when I was just sitting over there. I have looked at some of the other billboards. I don't believe that we will be within that six hundred foot, that you need separation distance between billboards. I don't think that would be a problem, but it could create a problem for this applicant if there's already an existing billboard within six hundred feet. I don't believe there is one, because I think the closest ones are getting kind of to Arby's, that Arby's area. I think there's a billboard, but.
Yeah, there's one somewhere around the exit, and then there's also, I think, a little digital one from Lamar, maybe the other direction, not too far. But I don't know how, whatever. But my other question is, if we approve this, are we approving the exact placement, or when they get down to it, can they move it over two feet? And that's okay as long as they meet the setbacks? Or does it have to be exactly where we're talking about?
If you approve the conditional use permit as presented tonight, you would just be approving the size. Now, you guys could put conditions on it to say you want, you're approving this conditional use permit with the condition that it's moved, you know, ten feet to the west, or whatever that number was. You could add conditions to it.
Sure.
But the presented tonight would just be for that size, and then the applicant could put it anywhere on. For sure, this tax parcel, we'd have to look if it's both tax parcels with the legal description.
Thank you.
Councilor Kylie, did you have some questions for Jason?
I do. Jason, when were the other billboards authorized that required conditional use permits? In other words, billboards that were larger than the two hundred and eighty-eight square feet?
That information was, two thousand seventeen was the one on Potsdam that I have, so that was done in two thousand seventeen at some point. And then the other one I have, we don't have the actual date, so that means it predates our current permitting software, EnterGov. So that would be prior, probably closer to, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. And that one was located on North Lowell Avenue, kind of up in that area by Benson that they talked about.
So those are the two most, are those the only two?
Those are the ones of the list of twelve that we have that are over the two hundred and eighty-eight square feet.
Okay. Now, the gentleman with the sign company had mentioned some others, I think Forty-first Street and Louise, Twenty-sixth Street, Benson Road.
He was talking about, some of the other ones, larger ones he was talking about, were actually on I-29, Interstate twenty-nine. And the ones that I mentioned, the twelve, those are specifically on two-two-nine.
What about traffic engineering's input in terms of the location and the proximity to the interchange here?
We send all these out to engineering also, and we didn't receive any comments that the location was not good for them with what their proposals are, what the proposal is for the exit relocation as part of the South Dakota Department of Transportation's kind of realigning of two-twenty-nine and Minnesota Avenue.
And the existing, the sign that exists now is approximately two hundred and eighty square feet?
The sign that we have now, I believe, is two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, which is the standard size you can do without a conditional use permit.
Okay. That's it for Jason. I do have other questions later.
All right. Any other question for Jason while we have him up here? Councilor Knightzert, go ahead.
The vertical one on I-29 near Twelve Street, that's, I'll call it the Beersbach Equipment one. That one is substantially the same size, is that?
Yep. That one went through a conditional use process. I believe it was probably last year, same type of process, same look as this specific one.
And I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure to get it on the record. You could, an applicant can change the sign copy, including changing from static to digital as long as they retain the same size with no permit, or, well, I shouldn't say no permit, but no public hearing. I mean, you can just do it. We're here because of the size change.
Correct. We have electronic message centers are allowed, and as you indicated, those would just be permitted as long as they were within that sign criteria. And we do have standards for scrolling, blinking, and those type of things that aren't allowed for those specifically distracting ones to motorists.
Yeah. And to your point, and to the, there was a concern raised, there is a requirement as to how often that they can change. They can't rapidly blink. They can't change in rapid succession. They can only be every so many seconds. So, thank you.
All right. All right. Thanks. Before we move in, other questions? Is there any disclosures of evidence? Anyone wants to disclose any correspondence they received? Councilor Knightzert, you said you may have some?
Yes, I do have disclosures. I just have a list here. And just for the audience, I did have it posted online. There's no legal requirement to do so, but I just wanted to be complete and transparent. I did watch the Planning Commission meeting of four-six-two twenty-two. That was prior to the knowing that there was going to be an appeal. I just happen to usually watch those. I reviewed all the attachments online, including staff reports, exhibits, letters, and lighting analysis. I reviewed Chapter one sixty, shaped places, zoning ordinance related to billboards on I-229, because I recall that there was a provision that specified specific requirements for I-229. And that says, "The Interstate two-twenty-nine corridor includes a variety of residential, commercial, and industrial land uses. In addition, several parks included in the Big Sioux River Greenway are adjacent to Interstate two-twenty-nine. The rolling topography provides a unique visual image and character to the city. Therefore, this standard is intended to protect the aesthetic qualities of the Interstate two-twenty-nine corridor. The total number of off-premise sign structures erected to be read primarily from the Interstate two-twenty-nine right-of-way shall not exceed twenty-one." And then, after reviewing all of the materials online, I noted that in the appellate's letter, they stated that the sign would be twelve feet off of the ground, and that sounded like that was a concern of theirs. And so I did ask the billboard company representative, specifically Zach Nigabauer of Book Your Billboard, who's here tonight. I asked him by text message, quote, "How high off the ground will the sign be? Is that accurate? And how does that differ from the current static sign?" And his answer was, "Twelve feet off the ground and forty feet high, which is the max. It meets all the current code requirements and is the exact same size as a vertical billboard located on the Beersbach property." And then I asked, "Will the new sign be vertical or horizontal?" His answer, "Vertical, twenty-eight feet tall and twenty-two feet wide." And then my last question, "Will the new sign pole be in the same or close to the same location as the current sign pole?" And he said, "Actually, about five feet to the west than the current pole." And then he offered one more text that said, "The appealing party's fence is five about feet onto this property. So the setback of the sign is fifteen feet from the property line, not ten feet. Also, the city sets a max height of forty feet, so with a length of twenty-eight feet tall, we end up twelve feet off the ground. Just an FYI, we had Dechatronics do a light study on this location with the actual board getting installed. I submitted it to Jason," by that he meant Jason Bieber, "today to share, and that light study is what he handed out and is attached." And then finally, I did go visit the Beersbach Equipment site at eleven oh one South Lyons at night, at nine fifteen PM, to see that particular billboard, to observe a digital sign at night. I had no interaction with anyone while I was there. I talked to nobody. And then at nine thirty the same night, I went to thirty-five oh three South Phillips Avenue, the subject property. I observed the current static billboard, the general proximity to the interstate and the neighboring property. I observed the subject property and the neighboring property, and I observed the interstate is generally higher in elevation than the subject site. And I observed the orientation of the neighbor's building in relation to the current static billboard. And I just observed the general ambient lighting conditions of the properties and the interstate. And I had no interactions with anybody there when I was there. And that concludes my disclosures.
All right. Can any of you guys top that? Any other disclosures of evidence received that wasn't disclosed tonight? All right. All right. So we have that out of the way. Further questions for the applicants or the opponents to this? Councilor Kylie, did you see you had some questions?
I do. And I think I'll start with Mr. Nelson, if he would come forward. And if we could put the other, the slide that shows the businesses up. Ron, just what, when you said your clients would not object if they moved it to the west, just where, are you to the end of the parking lot, near the building, or just where we're, or within that outlined area? To the west edge of that outlined area, or?
I like to think I do a good job of preparation, but I will say the lot lines caught me off guard. So I was talking to the west of, essentially, beside. So I was talking to the west of essentially beside the building there, so to the property not outlined in red, but the one further west of that. I didn't realize there were two platted parcels within that address. So actually, I was referring to kind of that little triangle where there's a, you can see the shadow of the streetlight going across, kind of in that corner there.
And do we know if there is, is there even the setback requirements there?
I would assume so. I looked on Google Maps and did kind of the drive to make sure that from at least visual appearance, there was no billboards within 600 feet, and then I actually physically went out and drove it, and I think Jason was referring to a billboard in front of or by it, like the Arby's or the VFW. I don't know if that's even in the same distance radius that they look for since that's on a different street, but those specifics I'm not familiar with exactly, but either way, it looked like it was further than 600 feet.
And again, where is your client? Where on this map here, are they located?
So you'll see in the billboard description, there's a little box, caption box, and that box kind of encroaches on their property. So where it's the J.H. Larson shown is is their property.
They're in the J.H. Larson property there?
Correct.
And there's no windows across the backside of that structure?
The site facing the interstate?
Yes.
I think there is in the office. There might be a couple in the, what was formerly used as a showroom area, but then the main warehouse, I don't believe there are any or any of significance at least.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Further questions, Counselor Kylie?
Maybe for the applicants.
Come on up.
Would your clients object to that move to the west closer in that little area, which would be south of that leg of the building there, closest to the interstate?
Are you talking about the triangle?
Yes, that little triangular patch.
Yeah. The concern would be with the size of the structure and the angles there, the setbacks that you could.
I was wondering if your sign would be able to go up high enough and and hang over and clear the structure, the roof of the structure?
Their building is a two-story building.
It is two.
And and if you look at that triangle, it's it's really hard to visualize, but that billboard, you can kind of, it would almost eat up that entire triangle, and we have to have 10 feet off of the, it would be the southern property line and then 10 feet off the west property line. And so it would be a different study, and I really, I hate to speak for my, you know, we're not the landowners, we're we're taking over the sales management of it. And so our current conversations with our clients today, just to be a good neighbor, because they've always gotten along for a very long time, is moving it to the west five to 10 feet, you know, 10 feet would be double the setbacks that are required. He said he had no problem with that, but anything past that, I would have to, you know, talk to our client. But just like visualizing it, I I don't know if you'd have the room in that triangle. I think you'd have to be on the east side of that building to make it work with the current setbacks required by the city.
And if they were on the east side of the building, would there be enough clearance or the top of the building to visual, to be able to see the sign? Is the is the building going to obstruct the view of the sign?
Right. Coming from the west going east, the sightlines would be obstructed.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions for the applicants while they're here?
I'm just, I am follow-up, curious why just five to 10 feet to the west? Why not maybe to the edge of the line that we see there?
I think the biggest thing, you know, speaking for the landowner, is they have their parking set, their parking lot set, and that particular area is not a parking spot. So if he goes past that, he's going to lose a parking spot in his office complex, and the building behind him that he also owns is a multi-tenant building, so you have a fitness center in there and you have someone else in there. So I think there's parking requirements based on the type of tenants that you have. And so losing that parking spot was a little bit of his concern, but the current area, there is some flexibility because it's just kind of like gravel or or crushed concrete.
And you also have all the infrastructure in place now, electrical, fiber, everything that we need in that.
I was going to ask about the electrical. Would that have to be upgraded? Because right now, it's just basically running as it just floodlights on the sign?
There will be, there will be some upgrading to it.
But more on the transformer level, not the line coming in.
Yeah.
So the line could be left intact without excavating?
We think so. These boards are pretty energy efficient compared to the old halogen lights that were on the floodlights.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicants here? Okay, Counselor Breckie, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, to approve, subject to one condition, and this condition should read, "This approval shall include permission to the applicant to move the sign up to 10 feet to the west." And then my explanation, if I could.
Go ahead.
Of the motion is to, I thought, rather, I was thinking about a motion to defer, to give them a chance to explore this five to 10-foot move since it appears there's been some discussion about it, but I thought maybe this would do it because it, all it does is just attach a conditional that's revocable by the applicant. So they, it's revocable upon their discretion, so if you approve my my motion, then they've got the permission to do it so they can continue talking with the neighboring landowner. If they do decide they they can adequately move it that 10 feet, and that pleases the adjacent landowner, wouldn't involve any additional time coming back to the council and would give them the discretion to do that.
All right, so we have a motion on that. Do you have a second for that one?
I'll second that.
All right, Counselor Kylie, we'll second that. Discussion on that motion?
I guess the only thing I would share, thinking about it, I don't know that it necessarily hurts anything, but as presented, it's, we're only approving the size of the sign. I believe that as long as they stay within the setbacks, they would have the latitude to move it, it five or 10 feet, and so we could simply share with both sides that we want you to both try to be good neighbors and try to be sensitive and move it over if you need to, and this sounds like this would be more or less not binding anyway. So I don't know that it hurts anything, but I don't know that it accomplishes anything, and I don't know if we should put conditions on that don't actually effectuate anything. So, just a thought.
And I, I do agree, I believe Counselor Knight is right. Actually, I think they could probably move it anywhere within that little odd-shaped space in there as long as they stayed within, in that outlined area and maintained the setbacks. Is that right? Yeah, I'm getting the nod. So I don't know that it is necessary either, but.
Okay. Any other discussion on that one? All right, let's let's vote on that one then.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightert?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that is going to pass five to one. Thank you, everyone.
Another another question, and I think maybe for the applicants, to Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Was there any, just quick, Dakota abilities is over on 41st Street. There is, is the sign high enough where any light will escape beyond, up to the 41st Street area? I know it was described as industrial.
Yep. You know, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the light studying that third page. You see the graph they put out? This is, Daktronics is a study that they stamped, and so again, any decimal represents a percentage of one lumen candle. I'm not sure if I know exactly where.
Do you know what the?
It would be some of, they look like apartment complexes, kind of a blue rooftop in there, almost straight north of your sign. I know it was described, like I said, it was described as industrial, but just on the other side of 41st Street, we do have some residential in there.
Would that be like 500 feet away?
I would have no idea.
Because it looks, you know, I'm looking at, it looks like after 43rd Street, you get real close to that 500-foot circle.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is 43rd Street. I said 41st Street.
And it looks like right around the 43rd Street line, you're less than 1% of one wax candle, so I would say almost nothing. The, what has been described to me is like the streetlights obviously would be brighter, or certainly in this situation, in this exact location, the interstate lights are significantly more brighter.
Putting on my Judge Judy hat here, we voted and it passed, so our kind of discussion and debate is done on this item. It's done. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Counselor Knight wants the floor for one minute though.
So I just want to clarify that, and this is my fault, I I was voting as if this was an amendment and this was voting on a motion to, I think, accept the conditional use permit with the condition, and so I voted no, even though I would have voted yes. I am not on the prevailing side, so I cannot make a motion to reconsider. If I could, I would, so I could vote yes. My colleagues want to do that, that's fine, and but we can let the record stand, but to be clear, I would have voted yes had I understood and not made that mistake of thinking it was a, an amendment versus a full motion, so, just to clarify. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we did vote on an amendment. We haven't voted on the main motion, have we?
There wasn't a main motion. So Counselor Breckie made a motion, and that a motion included that, I will call it an amendment, but it was different than what was presented.
I made a motion to approve, approve the conditional use, subject to.
Right, so.
Thank you.
We're good, we're passed. Amen. Thank you, guys, for being here. Move on to our next item.
Item 51 is new 2022 retail liquor license for Bacchus Holdings LLC, 101 North Minnesota Avenue, with conditional use permit CU 0159792022, being approved on March 2, 2022, pending final inspections per Fire, Health, and Building Services. Item 52 is the transfer of a 2022 packaged liquor license from AD Association Shopping Card East, 4301 East 12th Street, to East Mercato LLC, East Mercato, 4401 East 10th Street, CUP not required, pending final inspections per Building Services. Item 53 is a transfer of 2022 retail wine and cider license and 2021/22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License from Storm Clinic Proof LLC, Storm Clinic, 7600 South Minnesota Avenue, Suite 201, to Thalia Bar LLC, 7000 South Lindcrisp Place, CUP not required, pending final inspections per Health and Building Services. Item 54 is a transfer of 2022 retail wine and cider license and 2021/22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License from Jackie's Restaurant LLC, 702 East 8th Street, to Tijuana Street Food and Chiladas LLC, 702 East 8th Street, pending final inspections per Health. 55 is transfer of 2022 retail liquor license from DCK LLC, Club David, 214 West 10th Street, to Ballard Building Restaurant Company, Club David, 214 West 10th Street. 56 is transfer of 2022 retail liquor license from VFW Service Men's Club, 1700 West Russell Street, to Washington Pavilion Management Incorporated, 301 South Main Avenue. 57 is a special one-day liquor license for KJTLLC to be operated at the Social, 301 South Thompson Avenue, for weddings on May 14 and 21, 2022. 58 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated, to be operated at 8th and Railroad Center Parking Lot, 401 East 8th Street, for East Bank Block Parties on June 3, July 1, and August 5, 2022. Item 59 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for St. Mary Catholic Church, 2109 South 5th Avenue, for Church Social on June 22, 2022.
Good evening, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on items 51 through 59.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items?
Sheriff Burst, Sioux Falls. I'm happy to see item 55, Club David's sold their property. So the LGBT community was worried about where are they going to have their drag shows at? So I notified one of the owners of the property, and he told me that they will continue to have drag shows there and to be LGBT-friendly. I had told him if if it was going to stop, that I was going to open up a bar so they can have that space, especially during Pride Fest. I'm going to hold the owners accountable to that conversation that I had with one of the owners, that they will keep going as a LGBT and have LGBT events there, to that nature, there. I'm very happy to see that Club David's has sold. I don't think we're going to have any issues of police calls for service there. I don't think that we're going to have any juveniles there getting hit by 9mm pistol there, and I think this is going to be ran very well. Took a lot of months for them to purchase the property, took over four and a half months, five months, but I was very happy that we're not going to see the police aggravated no more, and I won't be hearing about the police saying that we keep coming to police calls on this property. Something has to get done, and we won't have no more victims of violence, especially juveniles coming into that place. They're going to have very tight security in there, and I'm very happy to see Club David has sold and that the violence is part ownership of Club David's.
Anyone else here to speak tonight on any of these items? All right, looking for a motion then.
Moving.
Second, Selberg. All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion here? Counselor Starr?
Jamie, can I, can you help me with 56? I've got a question about, so then the Alliance has a separate license where they're at now, or which license is this?
Item 56?
Yeah.
The Pavilion?
Yeah, but the license is coming from the VFW Service Men's Club, 1700 West Russell. That's the Alliance, isn't it? The address, or is this their old license from where the VFW was? I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong place. I'm a couple of blocks off, but I'm still, you know, partially interested in the Pavilion getting a full license because they've always done one-day licenses in the past, and I'm a big proponent of, if you're going to have a bunch of one-day licenses, you probably should have a full permit so that you're under the full guidance of what requirements of having a liquor license, so I guess.
Sure.
That's more my question that, in a circle of, so the Pavilion's going to, as a city-owned facility, have a a full-time license?
Correct.
That's basically what this is doing.
So the VFW building sold, and so this, they were holding it at this address inactive, and so when it, they needed to get it transferred, and it looks like they are, so.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Counselor Knight?
And I believe the Alliance just recently, they expanded the one that they had in their Alliance over to this building that they just bought, and so I'm taking it this is some other license that they're now, that some other entity is moving over to the Pavilion. Is that?
Yeah, that is correct. So yeah, with the, with the, the Alliance did, they have a campus now, they have three buildings that they own, so their one license will cover all three of those buildings, and this one was being held here inactive, wasn't being used, so we needed to get this one out of there, so.
Yep, thanks.
Other discussion here? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item.
Item 60 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 96, Streets and Sidewalks by adding Section 96.055 through 96.058. Sponsor is the mayor.
Evening, Andy.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Andy Berg, Public Works Engineering. Tonight's second reading is, I'll just briefly go over the the presentation from the prior meeting. This updates the ordinance, is basically proposing changes that will bring the city ordinances into alignment with state, South Dakota state law of 9-46-2, defining sidewalks in need of repair as a public nuisance. Municipal League was a primary supporter of this when the the state changed that law to add sidewalks into the nuisance category. It helps streamline our process. Our process right now, inspectors mark the sidewalk's defects with paint, leave the door hanger there, with the options and the deadline, then a notice of public nuisance and sidewalk repair is mailed to the owners with those same options and a deadline again. The owners then choose to either repair them themselves, hire a contractor to repair them, or have them, or have the city repair it and be invoiced for that work. And as for the funding of it, the owners are able to apply for a housing financial assistance, pay the invoice directly, or the city will bring forward a resolution of assessment to recover those costs. That'll open it up. Any questions?
Thanks, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you have any questions for Mr. Berg here? All right, look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Neitzert, I believe. Any discussion there, counsel? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero. Next item, please.
Item sixty-one is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended and restated conditional gifting and naming agreement for a future cash gift for the redevelopment of a portion of Falls Park. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. This item, before he was a companion item related to the supplemental appropriation that you approved at your April seventeenth council meeting, this item would update the agreement between the city and the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation whereby Gary and Diane Jacobson family have agreed to increase their contribution and investment to match the city's investment for the expanded scope and cost estimate to build Phase One of the Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park. And then it also, as part of that agreement, addresses the revised timeline for the project. I know you've seen this information several times, so I won't really go into any more detail regarding changes to the agreement. However, again, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank Gary and Diane Jacobson family for outstanding generosity to make this development a reality. Thank Mayor Tenhaken, city council members for your support for this project. This will really be another signature park development in the heart of our city and also in the heart of our downtown. And just to close, I was thinking about this project and its impact on the community and what it will do. It's really going to be a destination that people from not only the United States will experience, but people from all over the world. As many of you know, Falls Park on an annual basis attracts folks from over fifty countries to enjoy our city's namesake. So really can't think of a better way or a better place for an investment of this magnitude to occur than in Falls Park. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Don. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item tonight?
Move to approve. Breckie?
Second. Sale.
Okay, we have a motion by Breckie, seconded by Sale to approve item sixty-one. Is there a discussion on the council on this one? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item.
Next item is sixty-two, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at nine eleven and nine thirteen West Sixth Street, from the RT one Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT two Town Home Residential Traditional District, number one five eight two four twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Adam Astmas.
The applicant here and the owner is Adam Astmas. It's located at nine eleven and nine thirteen West Sixth Street. It's about point three one acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at adding some additional units within that existing duplex. They do have a significantly large garage on the south side of the property that will handle the increased parking requirements.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, you got any questions for Jason here?
Move approval.
Second. Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion, counsel? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item.
Item sixty-three is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of Interstate ninety and west of North Marion Road, from the AG Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number one five eight eight one twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Great Hall Properties LLC, Jonathan Casper.
The applicant here is Great Hall Properties. It's located at the southwest corner of North Marion Road and Interstate ninety. It's about sixty-five point four one acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing an industrial development with three buildings.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counsel, any questions here?
Move a motion?
Move approval. Neitzert?
Second. Sale.
All right, motion by Neitzert, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Item sixty-four is an second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West Thirty-second Street and east of South Ellis Road, from the POPUD Pedestrian Oriented PUD District to the C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Street Car and C-three Commercial Community Districts, number one six zero nine zero twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Schmitz Calder and Associates Incorporated, Kim Buell.
Counselor Neitzert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I own property within three hundred feet of the subject property, so pursuant to City Ordinance thirty-five oh five three, sub F, I need to recuse myself.
All right, you're recused. Jason, floor is yours.
The applicant here is Kim Buell. The owner is Ronnie Enterprises. It's located south of East Thirty-second Street and east of South Ellis Road. It's about thirteen point eight two acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing a future retail development.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on item sixty-four? All right, any questions, counsel, on this one?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve sixty-four. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Selberg? Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero. Next item, please.
Item sixty-five is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East Forty-first Street and east of South Line Drive Avenue, from the AG Agricultural District to the RA-two Apartment Residential Moderate Density Districts, number one six one one three twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant Cynthia Coystra.
The applicant and owner here is Cynthia Coystra. It's located at the southeast corner of East Forty-first Street and South Line Drive Avenue. It's about just under six acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing four three-story, twenty-four-unit apartment buildings, as well as garages and some onsite parking.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on sixty-five? All right, counsel, any questions for Jason here? All right, take a motion on this?
Move approval. Sale.
Second. Breckie?
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Breckie. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item.
Next item is sixty-six, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Sioux Falls Distribution Edition one six oh nine six twenty twenty-two. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicants, Great Hall Properties LLC, Jonathan Casper.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with the rezoning that we heard at sixty-three. It's located at the southwest corner of North Marion and I-90. It's about sixty-five acres, and as indicated before, they're looking at doing three industrial buildings.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this? Counsel, any questions here?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Starr.
Yep. Jason, is the storage, the stormwater pond, would, is that going to, I mean, obviously it's going to be up and down, but do they project there will be water there all the time? Or what will that look like if there isn't water there?
Well, typically, typically, the ponds are designed to be really just overflow when we get a lot of rain, so they're not full of water. Typically, they look like anything you see all over the city, to be honest with you. You're not going to probably really notice them unless they're full of water.
But the cattails are the, are probably not in this one?
Yeah, ponds like these ones aren't going to hold that much water. You know, some of them, they incorporate into water features, like I think in front of Let It Fly. You know, that's a detention pond that they actually incorporated as part of a water feature. But a lot of these are just dry, you know, three hundred and fifty days out of the year, and it's just those heavy rains where they have water in them. Thank you.
Any other questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank Counselor Starr for being very optimistic that we're going to get rain again. Appreciate that.
Hope so.
Forty days worth.
All right, I look for a motion on this one.
Move to approve. Sale.
Kylie.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item.
Item sixty-seven is a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation zero one six one nine two twenty twenty-two, Decker addition. Private applicants, Luke Decker.
The applicant and owner here is Amy and Luke Decker. This is located just northeast of the Willow Run Golf Course in the Arbor's Edge Development. It's about one point three acres in size. The purpose of this annexation is the applicants are looking to construct a new single-family home on that vacant lot.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on sixty-seven? All right, counsel, any questions here? Move approval?
Second. Sale.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg? Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Item sixty-eight, please.
Item sixty-eight is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the placement of sculptures on public property for an internationally recognized visual arts program known as Sculpture Walk Sioux Falls twenty twenty-two. Sponsor is the mayor.
So you guys had a real detailed presentation today and information, so I'll quickly just run through a couple of quick facts and highlights. As they indicated today, this is the nineteenth year of Sculpture Walk, and it's grown from thirty-four structure, or sculpture, excuse me, in two thousand and four to sixty-seven this year. At, to date of the nineteen years, a thousand sculptures have been displayed in Sioux Falls for a part of this program. They received a hundred and eighty entries this year, and five other countries were represented, represented, Canada, China, Nigeria, Ukraine, and Zimbabwe all submitted applications. And then the sculptures that you've seen downtown have all been removed, and the new ones, the sixty-seven, and then the twelve alternates will be put up on May fourteenth.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item sixty-eight? Counsel, you got any questions here? Look for a motion.
Move to approve. Breckie?
Second. Neitzert?
All right, motion by Breckie, seconded by Neitzert. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item.
Sixty-nine is a notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, counsel, any new business tonight? All right, we'll move on to general public input. It's a reminder input during this portion of the meeting. Will last no more than three minutes per person, and on topics we didn't talk about earlier in the evening. Anyone here for public input tonight?
Good evening. Robert Colby. I just happened to, there's been a big deal about leaked documents, and I happen to have one that I thought I'd share with you, and it has had to do with council appointments. And I understood that Ms. Sarah Cole is going to be in charge of getting the people out to vote. And Merkowitz is going to head up the LGBTQ Citizens Committee to make sure that all of the people of that ilk and nature are treated fairly according to the law. Baracano and his duties will be to direct ethnic unity in the Sioux Falls area. Ms. Zirikson will lead seminars on how to look at political issues and judge both sides. And Councilman Neitzert will be commissioned to go on out, excuse me, I've got this for years, it seems like, will be commissioned to go out to all of the conservative political events and get an idea on what the citizens of Sioux Falls think about or what they should be thinking. But no matter what happens, when the political wins bowl, we always have a sale to rely on and a start to follow. And the mayor is supposed to be taking a course in humility from the Trump University. Have a good day, live long and prosper, and may it rain.
Anyone else here tonight to speak?
Good evening. My name's Nick Anderson.
Can you pull the mics up a little, Nick?
Sure.
There you go. Thanks.
Better?
That's great. You bet.
I have some overhead documents. Can I put them up here?
Yeah, put it on. We'll flip it on for you. You just have to set it on there. There you go.
Okay, so I'm here to bring a, an issue in front of the council, in front of the mayor, that I feel should, the taxpayers should know. I have a little story of three city employees, all taking taxpayer salary, paid for by taxpayers. First one would be Luke Shower. He was a Sioux Falls City Police Officer. He was arrested on federal child porn charges. He was fired from the Sioux Falls Police Off, or Sioux Falls Police Force. You can see the mayor's statement up there. If you want me to, I can read your statement back to you, but I'm sure you know what you said. You can argue whether they were fired or not, but telling someone to resign, to me, is the same thing as firing them. So that's the first one. Here we have Matthew Chock. He was also accused of child porn crimes, taking taxpayers, taking taxpayer salary, working for the Sioux Falls Police Department. He was also fired from the Sioux Falls Police Department based on these accusations. And then we have Joseph Larson, also a Sioux Falls Police Officer. He was accused of simple assault, also fired from the Sioux Falls Police Department, also taking taxpayer salary. These three individuals are all awaiting trial. They're all accused. They're all innocent until proven guilty, but they were all still let go, fired, or resigned from their jobs because of the accusations against them. So here's the current city employee. I'm not going to name his name at this moment, but he has been charged with eleven counts of child abuse. He is a manager for the city of Sioux Falls. He is also taking taxpayer dollars in salary. And I feel that the taxpayers of this city, as well as me and my parents and other family members, deserve an answer as to why he is still taking taxpayer salary. That's what I'm here for.
This isn't a conversation, it's just input, so.
Oh, it's not a conversation?
No.
Okay, well, that pays his, his name is Daniel William Larson. He's an IT Infrastructure Manager for the city of Sioux Falls, and he is taking taxpayer dollars, and he does have eleven counts of child abuse pending against him.
All right, thanks, Nick. Anyone else for public input?
Wowser, huh? Sierra Bridge, Sioux Falls. Wowsters! So why wasn't he fired? And I knew about this all along. Why wasn't he fired? So we have to come to light with corruption, right? We have a cop that did what he did. I done talked to two of them about this, officers. The officers are held to send accountability, but they're humans just like us. But then we have this guy that did this, and I should get into the case about it, but I'm not because it's involving juveniles. He should have been let go. Doesn't look good when the mayor doesn't fire him, does it? If it was any one of y'all's kids or the mayor's kids, he would have been fired. This case is gruesome. The city attorney's office should know it. Second of all, when we have these kind of meetings that we had today, when the mayor cut me off, I'm going to advise that the chair of the meeting advise the public that there's no public input on those types of items, that there's no time limit. That's being very transparent on that issue there. Thirdly, I invited all city council members, again, to the Pedigree Neighborhood Association on Nathan Grange. So I think that everybody should be there. I'm going to have about anywhere from fifty to a hundred people. I have three hundred and ninety-eight emails from Cathedral to Pedigree. All I'm going to say is we need to work publicly and let citizens know what's going on behind closed doors with properties regarding the city and the school district. We need to be transparent as transparent as we can be. So that's why we're going to have this meeting. And we need to listen to the citizens. So that's why we're going to have this meeting, and we need to listen to the citizens and what they want on Nathan Grange. We're not going to have any meetings behind closed doors so we can stiff people, and we're going to develop and say, you know what? This is what you're going to get, and if you don't like it, move out of the neighborhood. Believe me, I know everything that's going on behind closed doors with this Nathan Grange.